Welcome, everybody. Good morning. Wow, it's a bit of an echo. Hold on. Is that better? Is that good? Can you hear me in the back? Okay. Good morning, everybody. Thank you. It's a meeting of the Board of Supervisors for the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District. Today is July twenty-fifth. The time is ten thirty. Do we have a quorum? Clerk, Counselor, somebody?
Yes, we have a quorum.
Okay. And we were properly noticed, Mr. Payne?
We were. We noticed.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I would like to invite Chaplain Dover. Is he here? Good morning, sir. How are you? Would you please lead us in an invocation?
Good morning, Chair and all the rest of the individuals in this room. I'm glad that I'll have this opportunity. Real quick, Job two thirteen, it says, "So they sat down with him upon the ground seven days and seven nights, and none spoke a word unto him." And biggest thing that we can ever do is be in presence of the individual, active listening and speaking to one another. As a chaplain, that is, my goal is to listen to everyone and never make a decision or a decision on what they should be doing. My job is just to confirm that they have issues. Every, we all have issues. I'm reading a book right now called Struggle Well, which deals with everyone has PTSD of some sort, and it doesn't have to be fire service or military. So with that, I'm gonna, if you will, pray in your own way. Dear Lord, we know that sorrow is inevitable in life, trials come, tragedies strike, leaving us at a loss for words. In times when these friendships is critical, we pray you will empower us to be tender-hearted to our friends who face tragedy. Give us wisdom to know when to speak, when to be silent, and when to reach out. Help us to be selfless during those times and not look to please ourselves or others with vain advice or ill-timed platitudes. We want, we want to be near you. We want to hear what you have to say. We want you to, once again, just bless this district, each and every employee here. Dear Lord, just completely just heal them if they're sick, be with them if there are mental issues at this time. And let them know that they are not alone, because we know that you are with us at all times. For this, we ask in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chaplain Dover. Pledge of Allegiance, it's Chief Farrar. There you are. Good morning, sir. Would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief Farrar. Do we have any public speakers today?
No, we do not.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Before we move on to that, I'd like to pull item five point four. It is not ready for discussion today. If there is no objection, I'd like to pull that from the agenda. Seeing no objection, it is pulled off the agenda. We are now on the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda should be disposed of without discussion. Would anybody like to move any item off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Submit.
Second?
Submit.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Consent agenda is adopted. Onto reports, we have Ms. Letso. Where are you? Good morning, ma'am. How are you? Item six point one is the semi-annual easement report.
Good morning. Within your board package, you received a copy of our semi-annual easement report. This is done in accordance with Resolution five sixty-five and covers the period from January through June of this year. And it's easements that were temporary only in nature and were executed under our district administrator. Any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Letso. All right, management report. Ms. Compulcis, good morning, ma'am. How are you?
Good morning. Thank y'all for being here. I just wanna start with, as Catherine just walked away from the podium. We, Catherine's team is responsible for our MS four permit, which is basically the regu, from DEP that allows for us to drain into the waters of Florida. So it's kind of how our whole drainage system through the district works. And those permits are always fun permits to keep up with, especially when the rules change. So the rules have recently changed, and we were the first to go through a draft permitting process with the new rules in place. And Catherine just went to the, I'm gonna get it wrong, but it's the Environmental Permitting Summer School, which kind of brings all the regulators together, and they teach us what they want us to know about the new rules that have come in place and help us. And Catherine got, pointed out that they have, we are the first to receive the draft permit under the new rules. And they liked what Catherine's team did so well that they now shared that with the whole state, everybody that's going through the permitting process. So while we might be loved by DEP now, every agency in the state probably hates us 'cause we survived the process.
Yay, Catherine.
Yeah, Melissa's the one that spearheads that, but it is a team effort and it is not a fun process to go through. But I think that just shows what relationships that our team has with our state regulators and how closely we work with them to not shove stuff under the rug, but go to them and work to solve issues. So Catherine, thank you. Melissa, the whole team. The other is Craig here? I don't even think Craig's here today. Oh, but I will, I will share something with you. As you know, we've been under construction with World Drive North now for a long time. A good portion of it was utilities and relocating utilities. And in that process, the Polynesian Hotel, Part of Magic Kingdom, and the Grand Floridian have all been on temporary chillers. And so while some have been on there for a couple months, the Polynesian has been on for over a year now. And I give them complete credit. That is a huge feat to operate everything on a temporary chiller. I give Chris's team credit for helping us through that process to make sure we get it right. This week, we came off the temporary chiller, so we are now back on the central system. And I say that and everybody's like, our teams make it look, Chris's team and Craig's team made it look real easy, but it was not a small feat to keep that running and keep it operating and making sure we didn't lose a single minute or, or, you know, really anything in that process. So very proud of that and very grateful that we're now off the temporary chiller. Also want to give Chris's whole team a shout-out. We had, tell me if I'm missing anybody. Jaime, Joe, Paul, Brad, Brad, the engineer, the technical one. In the past week, we have had a, several issues with some aging infrastructure, and Chris's team worked really day and night to get some things changed out and, and operating again. And no one missed a beat and just grateful for the team, and they worked really hard. We went over there two days ago, Wednesday, and it was nice to see the, I think the team was relieved that the week was over, but I don't think Chris slept for about seventy-two hours in this process. But we're back up and going and everything's going well, but it just shows the teamwork. And I don't think what Chris's team accomplished in a matter of less than twelve hours, if we were in a normal, normal city or county, would have taken several weeks. And so that goes to show the forward thinking and just how accomplished the team is in getting the job done. The other, one more item, Craig's team finished last night replacing the lighting in the orange garage. So if you go into the orange garage, it is, looks like it is high noon all day, all night. But it's great for safety and it's nice to have the additional light replacement done. And we'll move on to the lime garage and get that done. And I will close with thanking each of you. I know for us, we're paid to be here, but it is a, it is a volunteer job, but we appreciate your leadership and y'all being here to keep us on the right path. So thank you.
All right. Any questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Compulcis. Appreciate it and always appreciate your leadership. Moving on to general business, item seven point one is a recommendation that the board approve the purchase of one Monarch Heavy Rescue Fire Apparatus from Septon, I think I'm saying that correctly, corporation, and authorize the district administrator to execute documents in the amount of one point eight million plus. Chief Farrar, you wanna tell us what this is, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. We are seeking to replace our special operations heavy rescue truck. This has been in service since two thousand and six, and that is a picture of it up on the screen. This is a unique vehicle, unlike a fire engine that carries water and its primary mission is fire suppression. This vehicle is a giant toolbox that carries specialty equipment for our special operations team. And this is a group of firefighter paramedics that have a much higher advanced level of certification and training to be able to deliver service at these highly complex scenes that involve various disciplines with rope rescue and vehicle machinery rescue and other complex incidents. So this apparatus has reached its end of life after twenty years. Safety mechanisms on the vehicle have improved. Cabinet space will be improved. We have to store more equipment. And this is the vehicle we were actually able to show you yesterday in detail and all the equipment it carries. So if you think of like the jaws of life and things you see on TV, this vehicle carries the highly capable equipment such as that. So this contract will be with Septon Fire Apparatus. It will be funded through the general fund budget capital. We anticipate delivery in twenty-four months, which will be the opportune time to take the front-run apparatus of twenty years and move it into reserve. And we're requesting one million eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars that'll be paid over three years to purchase the Septon Monarch Heavy Rescue Truck. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the vehicle or the purchase.
Any questions?
I will say I did get to see this vehicle yesterday. It's impressive, the complexity of the equipment that it carries. And I can't believe they are able to provide all those service lines from one vehicle, understanding the equipment has changed and that they need a different vehicle to carry it. Really happy that you brought this forward and were able to move forward and modernize that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have a motion to approve item seven point one?
Submit.
Second?
Submit.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item seven point two, there's a recommendation that the board approve establishing the budget for the rehabilitation of Cooling Tower number five and six project at the Central Energy Plant in the amount of one point six five, authorizing district administrator to execute the contract with Harper Limbach LLC for construction services in the amount of one point four, plus ten percent contingency for the total amount of one point five plus, and approving an allowance for RCES design support services fees not to exceed fifty thousand. I, I don't give exact figures, so these are rounded. Go ahead, Ms. Farrar, you have the floor. Good morning, ma'am.
Yes, just a little bit of background for the board's consideration for this item. So this work is set to occur at the Central Energy Plant in the northern part of the district's service area. This plant has eight chillers used for chilled water production and six cooling towers. Cooling towers are an essential part of this chilled water system. Water is cooled by the chillers to about forty-five degrees, sent out through a closed-loop system to customers for use, and comes back to the plant at an elevated temperature. These cooling towers use evaporation and condensation to cool that water before it comes back through the chillers for another cooling cycle. So routine inspections are conducted of these facilities in January of two thousand and twenty-five. Cooling Towers five and six were identified with some deficiencies that need correction. In the pictures, on the upper side is the exterior of the plant showing the cooling towers and the basin below. And the other two pictures are part of the interior structures, which you can see is wood and piping and is in need of some repairs from corrosions. So always thanking Tiffany and her team, worked with them to issue an invitation to bid for this work. Happy to receive very close bids from two local vendors. Harper Limbach is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder in the amount of one million four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. As stated by the board chair, this item can ask for board a consideration of an overall budget for the project of one point six five million. Authorization for the district administrator to execute contract C zero zero six eight two one with Harper Limbach for construction services in the amount of one million four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars, plus ten percent contingency in a total amount of one million five hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars, and fifty thousand dollars for RCES design and support services for this work. This work is funded through a utility planned work capital program that is collected through rates. Some of the cash flows will occur in fiscal twenty-five, and the others are considered and included in the fiscal twenty-six budget that will come to this board for approval in the following months. Are there any questions on this project or budget?
Any questions? All right, seeing none. Thanks, Ms. Farrar. Is there a motion to approve item seven point two?
Submit.
Second?
Submit.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Item seven point three, I see you still standing. This one's yours too. All right, item seven point three is a recommendation that the board approve establishing the initial budget for the sixty-nine KV Transformer Replacement Program, theme park substation project in the amount of six million dollars, authorizing this district administrator to execute a task work order under continuing services agreement contract C O O six 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 one with QTIB Engineers LLC for professional services. for professional services in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, plus a ten percent contingency for a total amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, forty-three dollars, and approving an allowance for R C E S design support service fees not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Ms. Farrar?
Thank you. So more background on this project. Always excited to talk about an electric reliability program. So the district does have ten substations with sixty-nine thousand volt to twelve thousand volt substation transformers, and we are embarking on a program to replace those assets as they come to end of life. The two units proposed for replacement are shown in these pictures. It's called Theme Park Substation. It is the original electrical substation at the district installed in nineteen sixty-nine. One of the units proposed for replacement is, was installed in nineteen sixty-nine, and the other is much younger, inspired, and installed in nineteen seventy-nine. But they have ongoing condition assessments, and they are both, have reached the end of their service life. So the equipment for these transformers, for the replacement of these transformers, is a long lead time item, and the board considered and approved the request to purchase these units from G E Waukesha in Minnesota back in October of two thousand and twenty-four. Happy to report that the lead times on these units has improved. When the units were ordered, it was a lead time anticipated of about thirty-six to forty-eight months. Right now, the supplier is telling us that they can deliver the first of the units to us in two thousand and twenty-six. Also, when we came to the board last year, we had proposed installing these new units at Epcot Substation. Since that time, we've had some different looks at expansion and redundancy needs at Epcot, and we are considering installing larger transformers at that substation. So our intent now is to use the units that are already on order to replace the units at Theme Park Substation. In the financing list of projects considered by the board, the replacement of the Epcot Transformers was put into that new borrowing that the board has considered and is in progress right now with the district's financing team. So the project today considers full board approval of the full scope to remove the units that are currently installed at the substation and install the new units when they come in from this manufacturer. Included within that budget is a proposal for the equipment ordering of about three and a half million dollars. When that equipment was ordered with the lead times in place, it was not ordered associated with a specific project. It was ordered and guaranteed using utility reserve funds. So the intent of this project would be, as the budget is established and approved by the board, those funds that are held in reserves would be transferred to this project and to the bond funds available for its use. So as mentioned by the project board chair, we're looking for a six million dollar overall budget for this project and the district administrator to execute a task work order under a continuing services contract with Q T I B Engineers in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, plus ten percent contingency for a total amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for design services for this work and an approval of a fifty thousand dollar allowance for R C E S for design and support services. So as we proceed through this project, the board will continue to see other contracts associated with this as we get through the design process and go out to bid for the construction services for this work.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve item seven point three?
Submit.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Farrar.
Thank you.
Item seven point four, Ms. Higginbotham.
This is our proposed budget and millage rate, millage, excuse me, millage rate, can't speak. This will be a motion to approve a proposed millage rate of twelve point four two three six. I'm gonna ask Ms. Higginbotham to walk us through that before we...
Yes, welcome to budget season. This will be the first of four meetings. We'll be discussing the budget for the general fund. In August, we'll have a workshop where we'll dig a little bit deeper, and utilities will also present their budget. In July, we set the proposed millage, which is the millage rate that goes on the trim notices that's mailed to all the taxpayers, where it gives them an estimation of what their tax bill will be, and also advertises our first public hearing. So when you're talking about setting a millage rate, the first thing you have to look at is your assessed values. That's what your millage rate is applied to, to get your ad valorem tax revenues. For our fiscal year twenty-six budget, we're looking at seventeen point seven billion in assessed value, which is an eight point eight seven percent increase over the prior year's assessed values. Some items of note that have been added to the tax roll are the Island Tower at the Polynesian, Tiana's Bayou Adventure, various guest room renovations around property to include the Boardwalk Villas, Bay Lake Tower, the Yacht Club, Doubletree, Swan, the Renaissance, and Port Orleans. Looking at our millage rate, we are proposing to lower our overall millage rate. There's two parts. There's debt service and operating. For the debt service, we would like to lower it from four point one seven mils to three point eight four mils. Using the assessed values, this will give us enough in our debt service fund to cover our annual debt service payment of sixty-six million. For operating, we propose to lower that from eight point nine one three mils to eight point five eight three six mils. When you're talking about the operating millage rate, we always compare that to the rollback rate. So the rollback rate is the millage rate that would give you the same taxes as prior year, taking into account new construction. So the rollback rate of eight point four oh four six, our operating millage is two point one three percent above the rollback rate, which is a tax increase, and as such, we will advertise as a tax increase. Looking at our revenues, we're looking at our budgeted to actual, two hundred and twelve million. We're expected to hit the mark and be right in the same range. For our twenty-six budget, we are increasing that to two hundred and nineteen million with the seven million dollar increase in ad valorem taxes. That is a result of the new millage rate and the new assessed values. And going down, we did bump up permits and fees a little bit based on our Ella's estimation of upcoming activity in the building department. Going on to our expenditures, for two thousand and twenty-five, we budgeted two hundred and eighteen million, and we're expecting to come in under budget at two hundred and ten million. We did have a few planned work projects that we're going to roll over. The S four oh five rehab for drainage, overhead truss replacements for roadway, two traffic signal replacements in roadway, and then our master drainage model that is expected to take two years. Catherine is working on. We have started it, but we are gonna roll over it. So when I say rolling over and our actuals coming in less than our budget, these amounts are not in our actuals, which is making us come under budget, but they roll down to our ending fund balance, which then in turn for twenty-six goes to our beginning fund balance, and then those items are located within our twenty-six budget. So it's kind of just moving it from one year to another. For our twenty-six budget, total expenditures are, right now, budgeted at two hundred and thirty-four million, and that's a seven point one two percent increase in our expenditures. One item I'd like to note, if you look in our twenty-five actual column, you'll see a expenditure of one point three million for property appraisal settlements. We did have a settlement this year, and we did refund the taxpayer. It was a settlement between the property appraiser and the taxpayer. We were named because we collected the taxes, and so we did refund that. That did, came out of our set aside that we had committed for property appraiser settlements. So for the timeline for the budget, today we ask you to approve our proposed millage of twelve point four two three six. In August, we will present a more detailed budget down to the department level, digging in on things that are being requested, planned work, headcount, that sort of thing, equipment. And as I mentioned, utilities will also present their detailed budget. In September, we have two public hearings that are in the evening, where we will vote on a tentative budget and then a final budget. And that's all I have for my presentation. Is there any questions?
I just have one very broad question for our district administrator. We have a bit of a budget increase, but I just wanna have the full picture that we, my understanding, we're expecting also some higher workflows, some more production out of our district, so it is not the same level of business being provided as in the prior year. So I just would like to get a little context on that for the public in terms of why we have the, we see the revenue side and the expense side, but also what's going on on the work side. If you could just give us some broad brushstrokes on that.
Sure, sure. As you'll recall, in the development agreement that was signed with our largest taxpayer, the Walt Disney World Company, their investment exceeds over eight billion dollars. And as you can imagine, the amount of work that's coming, they have expansion projects in each park as well as they're knee-deep in a new D B C hotel that's currently going up now. So we do expect to see quite a bit of influx over the next, so that's why Ella's fees grew in the building department. And her team will be extremely busy. We're currently now trying to fill some openings that we have and keep our team strong because it has been extremely busy, just what we're doing now. But you have to look to it, the Swan and Dolphin is done, is in the middle of a huge expansion project for banquet space that they used to put tents up, and now they're putting a full building up. So we're seeing a lot of refurbishments too in each of these hotels as you go forward. So there's quite a bit of work just on the regular of the refurbishing of the rooms in the hotels that exist today, but the new development and the changes that are coming in our parks is pretty significant.
Thank you. So the growth in our expenses commensurate with the growth in our work production, right? Okay, thank you. Any questions? Do we have a motion to, hold on one minute, I wanna make sure I get the numbers. I can't, I can't estimate this number. Hold on one second. Let me pull it up here. Do we have a motion to approve, gosh, I cannot get yours out. May I have a motion to approve a proposed millage rate of twelve point four two three six?
Submit.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Higginbotham and Ms. Kapalusis. Really appreciate that. Look forward to our August discussion on some more of that detail too. Is there any other business for anyone on the board? Any comments, discussion, other business? Seeing none? All right, we will stand adjourned. The time is, hold on, ten fifty-nine. Thanks so much, everybody. Really appreciate it. Have a great day.